KJazz 88.1, Vince D'Araldi Trio Cash Show Fade to the Wind. Before that, Alive in L.A., the name of that album, and that was Lee Rittenhour and Westbound, member supporter KJazz. Boy, I love that tune. It is definitely on the money. For the folks who are going up to Riverside right now, currently, the temperature is 61 degrees and cloudy. Thank you for being a member of the family here at KJazz. Commercial free thanks to your generosity. This is a good day for jazz. I'm gonna be telling you a bit later about the folks who were born on this day. And by the way, this is the first day of spring, and in DC, the cherry blossoms, well, they say, "We're not crazy. We'll wait till the weather changes." And it gets a little warmer, but that's okay. The day is still a good day. A member supporter KJazz 88.1. When I get back to some more music, it's gonna be Wes Montgomery on KJazz.
Programming on KJazz is supported by the L.A. Phil, presenting Max Raba and Palast Orchestra, April 10th, at Walt Disney Concert Hall. The musical charm of the 1920s and 30s is captured by these German musicians in a show of familiar melodies, from Kurt Weill to Cole Porter and Irving Berlin, alongside Cuban rumbos, happy foxtrots, and stylish dangos. Tickets are available at LAFil.com.
The jazz landscape is remarkable. Duke, Train, Ella, Miles, Mongo, plus all points that swing in between. Hello, this is David Benoit. Join me morning, starting at 6:00 a.m., you'll hear these great artists and quite a few others on KJazz 88.1.
Good evening, and welcome to the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 20th, 2013. Can we have the pledge of allegiance, please? Barbara, would you like to lead us? I know I didn't give you any warning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my government, and municipal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Steve Solomon, here. Vice Chair Esther Cummings.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Robert Goldberg.
Mr. Goldberg, Dr. Goldberg has been delayed. Evidently, the train broke down in North Long Beach, and he's stuck. So we'll hopefully he makes it before the meeting's over.
Need a motion to excuse him?
Okay, it's not necessary.
Okay.
Planning Commissioner Patty Campbell.
Here.
Chairperson Sandra Masalavitt.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll do the approval of the agenda now. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there any change to the agenda this evening? None? We'll move on to oral communications.
About consent.
Do we need to have a motion for this?
You do have a consent calendar item, I believe.
We do have a consent.
On the approval of the agenda, yes.
We have to have a motion to approve the...
No, you can just order by the order of the chair. There's no changes.
Okay. By order of the chair, the agenda is approved. Oral communication. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any item within the subject-mannered jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. This is the point, if anybody would like to speak to an item on the agenda that is not listed.
Good evening. Mike Beale, Old Town. Congratulations, Mr. Solomon, Miss Campbell, on your appointment to the board. I'm very brief, I'm just curious as to what information you might have on the low-income housing property. So perhaps in your discussions, that'll come out.
Not this evening. Okay. Consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 6?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, or please vote. Four to zero. Minutes are approved. There are no scheduled matters, and we'll move on to the public hearing, conditional use permit 12-12. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, this item is for conditional use permit 12-12, CUP for short-term vacation rental at 1605 Seal Way. This is a continued public hearing from the February 6, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Just to recap, the property, subject property is an existing legal non-conforming triplex. The nonconformities have to do with density on the lot, as well as parking. The large rental unit in the front, or I should, in the front of the lot is a three-bedroom unit. A smaller unit is a two-bedroom unit. The property owner does live on the premises. In addition to the correspondence that has already been received by staff and included in the staff reports, there was one additional email that was received today and was placed before you on the dais this evening. The subject property only provides a two-car garage for all three units. Under today's code, three two-car garages would be required. The driveway apron in front of the garage, at a depth of 5 feet 6 inches wide from the garage space to the white line in the alley, is not of sufficient width to be able to legally park a car in front of. The concrete pad adjacent to the garage is presently used for vehicle parking, but does not meet the city's minimum dimensional requirements for parking stalls. The pad itself is approximately 7 feet 6 inches wide and 35 feet deep, and due to its location adjacent to a solid wall, the zoning code requires that the minimum allowable dimensions for this concrete pad to be legally counted as parking would be 11 feet wide. The zoning code does stipulate that when a parking space is adjacent to a solid wall or a solid object, that an additional 2 feet be required to, for that parking space to comply with the minimum width dimensions. Normally, a parking stall, a minimum dimension is 9 feet in width, and in the case of this being adjacent to a solid wall, it would be 11 feet in width. And if it were to be considered a tandem space, the minimum depth would need to be 36 feet, and in the case of the subject pad, it's 35 feet deep. Staff is recommending denial of CUP 12-12 based on inadequate parking and lot density. And I would like to add that at the very end of the staff report, there is a sentence fragment that was inadvertently left in. That sentence fragment, which I believe there's five or six words there, should have been deleted. So that wasn't the beginning of the thought or a fragment, it should just be deleted altogether. And with that, it concludes staff's report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff, the planning commission?
Yes, I have some. Is this mic on?
No.
Okay. Okay. I have a question. When I look at the pictures of the car parked in the alleyway, get the one with the car in the alleyway, if you can. Not the Google map, the one with the car parked in the driveway.
The one in the staff report?
Is that in the staff report?
Yeah, the ones that we have in our pack.
I do not have an electronic, but those were submitted as paper versions.
Well, in the packet, the ones that we have, there's a car parked in the, in that stable spot there. My concern is twofold. One, if a car, if you get out of the car, you're exiting onto somebody else's property. And if somebody were to fall, that creates a liability for that owner. And so, that's a concern, that's one of my concerns. Because if they use that as a parking spot, and they exit, and they get injured on that curb or something, or the sidewalk, what kind of a liability position does that put that owner in? Okay? Secondly, what if the owner of that property on the left wanted to put a fence? Could they use that as, could they put a fence, could they put a fence in there?
I believe that with a permit, they could.
With a permit, they could. If you, okay, they could do that. Then you've lost the parking space. So with that in mind, I don't think you can consider that a parking space legally.
And it's staff's position that legally, it does not meet the minimum standards.
Because you can't grant it if, because he might always put, there's always, the possibility exists of putting a fence there. So it seems to me you can't grant somebody to use that as a parking spot if somebody else has the right to put a fence down it.
That's an issue for discussion amongst the planning commission. The staff has already answered that question, so let's discuss that issue when it's, before...
Well, that was my question. Could they use the fence? They put a fence there?
Of course they did.
Yes, and that's what Jerry said, yes. Okay.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
Jerry, did you say that the, that this parking area is illegal anyway? Is that what I heard you say?
The existence of the concrete pad itself is not illegal, but staff cannot consider this illegal parking space since it does not meet the minimum required dimensions for a parking space. Now, that's not to say that a car cannot fit in there, but we can't count that as additional off-street parking because it does not meet those dimensions to be counted as additional off-street parking.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions from the commission. Let's open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to come up and say a few words? What's different from the last time that we spoke?
Hi, I'm Frank Tomich. I submitted a letter. I'm hopeful that you all received it through Jerry. Okay, so it kinda explains the idea that I had. It's basically, the idea being that I would give my garage to my tenants, and that I would be parking my car on the area next to the garage. Currently, I have two parking permits for the street that I use for my tenants. If their cars, what it would be is each tenant, each renter, would have the right to one space in the garage, and if they had an additional car, there is one parking permit for it. Typically, I don't see that. Most of the time, it's someone that's coming in with one vehicle per, per unit. Occasionally, two, but I have the permits for that already. My idea was to park my car alongside the garage. If my daughter comes to visit me, she would park behind me. If and when a fence ever went in there, I'm not quite sure it's legal because it's pretty narrow if they put a fence there, but that I won't debate tonight. As far as liability, people are walking from the beach right through my property every day, and I can't stop them. So I'm liable if they follow my property, I guess. I mean, because I don't think I can put up a fence to prevent that from happening. Not sure, but if anybody knows, I'd be, you know...
Why can't you?
I don't know. I'd be blocking, I don't know, is there a law against that? Blocking people from coming from the beach?
There's access to the beach and other places.
Because she brought up a good point I didn't even realize. You know, I'd never thought about that side, but I'm talking about my side, people are walking all the time.
Well, you'd have to fence it off.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would preclude you from using your neighbor's side yard to open your car door.
Yeah. And as I stated in my letter, if the main issue here is parking, when you look at long-term renters and how many cars they bring to the party, so to speak, it's, it's actually gonna be more. Because long-term renters will be there 12 months out of the year. Will currently have about 50% occupancy, maybe less. It's the summer, and that's when it happens. And so, if you're looking at just from a parking prospect, it's just, you're looking at 12 months out of the year where you're gonna have people that, in two of the units, they're probably gonna have two cars each. I mean, that's a fact. And they're gonna have friends over, they're gonna have parties. My neighbors have parties. You know, it's what people do. There's gonna be holidays. Where are they gonna, you know, where are they gonna park? If parking is the issue, this is my concern too. Because I live here. So it's one of those things about be careful what you wish for, because if you think long-term renters are the solution, I don't think they are. That's just my opinion. And, but I will go by whatever, whatever you guys decide tonight, and you know, if I don't get the permit, we get lemons, we make lemonade. I do the best I can, you know, but if parking's the issue, I, I don't see the long-term renter as the solution.
I noticed in the staff report that, and I remember from our last discussion, that you were gonna survey?
Yes. Well, once, I'm sorry, once I came up with this idea, I basically told my attorney, I said, "Let's forget about the survey. Let's just present this idea. If, you know, if logic prevails here, in my opinion, then we'll get it. If it doesn't, then we'll just do whatever, you know, we can, which is long-term rental, I guess."
Any other questions from the commission?
I'm at a loss as to why it makes a difference as to who parks where. You know, does it make any difference whether the guests park in and not the guests park in?
I like the idea of the guests parking in the garage, because what it does is, it allows them to pull their car in the garage and then unload their luggage. Okay? I don't, I really didn't like it when they would come in and try and get into that next to the garage there. It is hard to do, and they're, you know, they could be blocking traffic. I had a family reunion on my, my side a couple of weeks ago, and there were two SUVs, and there was a car, okay? So when they arrived, I told the SUVs, "You go out to Neptune and unload your cars and bring it in. It's not that far. It's three houses away." The other car pulled right into the garage and unloaded their things. And it was simple. I like that better. I, I think that, you know, I was new to the property, and I just assumed, whoa, have the, have the guests park there, but it's not a good place. It, I understand that now. It really isn't. But for me, it's so easy to pull in there with my little car, and my daughter has a little car too. It's ideal.
You have the same situation with groceries and things like that, though, don't you?
Yeah, when I pull in there, though, if I were to pull in there, it's not a problem. I just, I'm not blocking anybody.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll take your testimony, and you'll have an opportunity...
And thank you for giving me the extended time to figure this thing out, as I could. All right, take care.
Would anyone like to speak on this subject?
Good evening, I'm Barbara Barton. I am concerned about the property at 1605 Seal Way. By the way, what happened to the attorney that we gave two extra months to, to check this out? I mean, I am confused about what happened there. At any rate, I think that I was, I thought I was under the impression that this was purchased as a single-family dwelling with five bedrooms, but I guess I was confused. Is this not a single-family dwelling?
Three separate.
Three separates, okay. At any rate, it's before you as a vacation weekly rental, and I really can't see putting more vacation rentals down here in Old Town. We have a parking problem like always, and we've mostly learned to live with it. And you cannot park your car on your neighbor's property. I had that problem, I put a concrete wall. I mean, we just build, a wall makes good neighbors, let's face it. So what I'm saying is, I hope that you'll give a no vote on the continued use permit for 1605 Seal Way. Any questions? Thank you.
Mike Beale, Old Town, Seal Beach, 14 Central Way. I have some of these with Mr. Tomich, wanting to rent his property, but I think the parking issues are great, and it's hard to predict when you've got renters coming in and leaving on short-term, how that parking is gonna work out. The alley, access to the alley and the access from the alley into the parking is also confusing as, as previous residents of that area have explained. I would recommend that this be denied, and the resolution for me is that Mr. Tomich is still able to rent this property in the summer for 30 days at a time under current law without needing a permit.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Georgia Moreno, 1606, right across the way. I'm not gonna add more to what I think I've already spoken about here, other than I appreciate the thorough report, the 47 pages of documentation for this. I will add some history. That seems to be a little nonexistent here regarding this particular location. For the better part of 14 to 15 years, it had been a rental unit, not a short-term rental, but a long-term rental. There's never been any issues with parking because a long-term rental, very quick, all they need to get is one ticket, and they recognize quickly what the rules and the mores are within that environment. And you work it out, as well as, you know, when you're unloading and deloading and things of that nature. There's just a sense of community, there's a sense of people learning what goes on that you get with long-term rentals that you don't get with the short-termers, who'll just show up, unload. Everyone does enjoy the beach, there are parties, true. The good news is that with the long-term rentals, we tend to invite them, and they tend to invite us. You don't get that with the short-term rentals. And so, I would just add that into the mix as well. I would concur with the staff recommendation to deny it as a short-term, but open it up for a long-term, 30 days or more. We'll welcome them and show them what an awesome place that particular location is to live in. It's quiet, it's peaceful, not a lot of people know about it. And all of the owners know each other. We've lived there many, many years, and we know each other by name. We tell each other when garage doors are open or closed, when cars are parked or not parked correctly. Those are the kinds of things that we like to keep and not have to worry about when I have my garage door open, somebody's questioning me about my bicycles or my motorcycle or this kind of stuff, because then I'm wondering, why is this stranger asking me this kind of question? You know, which is another concern that I have about folks I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Tomich, would you have anything to add? No? Okay. Gonna close the public hearing. Is, is there any discussion among the planning commission about this project? Don't all jump in at once.
Well, we've talked about it.
I think we've beat it to death.
Several other times. I think, I think the staff has really, this report especially, I mean, with the added information on the specifications for a legal parking area, clarified this so that I feel very comfortable with their recommendation.
I feel comfortable with the recommendation as well, and I think the, this gentleman, and I forgot your name already, just made a statement about long-term history, the long-term rental history of this piece of property, and that there really weren't any problems. It's got, it was very cohesive within the community, and the short-term rentals are what's causing noise and additional traffic and the inability to park where they're supposed to park. The, then you go on the, on the... The, then you go on the, on the other side of that and the long-term rentals, month-to-month, you know, maybe a lease, the cars are going to be parked in the street and it's true. There's only two parking spaces for three units. So that is, that is going to be a problem that's not going to go away. It will be there whether or not it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental. It will always be there. So doing one or the other shouldn't be considered by whether or not we have enough parking for the area, for the, this particular project, because it's never going to have enough parking. And I can use that in my mind as the reason why I will go along with the staff's recommendation to adopt, to deny the conditional use permit for short-term vacation rentals.
And I agree. I, I think the parking situation is terribly deficient and based on what we've heard in terms of, of testimony here, if you will, there's a lot of aggravation with, with parking in that area. I think we need to be very considerate of that. And so I, I tend to agree that a denial of this conditional use permit is an order.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I move that we deny CUP 12-12 for a short-term vacation rental property.
I'll second that.
Chair, there is a resolution for your consideration?
Yes.
So would it be adoption of resolution number 1222?
Yes.
Be part of the recommended, of the motion?
Yes, adopt resolution 1222, which denies conditional use permit 12-12.
Right. Thank you.
That's what I meant to say. Yes, I know, she did mean to say that. Okay, please vote. Four to zero. Sorry, it's denied.
And so for the benefit of the applicant and for everyone else in the audience, the approval of this resolution is the final decision of the Planning Commission. There is a 10-day appeal period that begins tomorrow, March 21st.
The direct, is there a director's report?
Madam Chair, just briefly, your next Planning Commission meeting will be April 3rd. There is a workshop that will commence at 6 o'clock. It is a joint workshop with the Ad hoc Committee and is for the purpose of reviewing the upcoming housing element, issue draft 2013, 2014 through to 2021 planning period. Also, just as a reminder, the Planning Commission meeting will commence at 7 o'clock, not 7:30, on April 3rd. That concludes director's comments.
Okay, then on April 3rd, we will be considering the code amendments and the specific plan amendments and the zoning change and, okay. All right. It's a full agenda next time, so be prepared. Eat a nourishing dinner.
Get some coffee, huh?
Yeah. Commission concerns. Ms. Campbell?
What?
Ms. Cummings?
Nothing.
Mr. Sloan?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. So meeting's adjourned. We're done.
So you'll be adjourned to 6 o'clock on April 3rd?
Yes, 6 o'clock on April 3rd.